We're also.
That's all right.
Is that easy? You got any fanciness in it?
No.
Well, H G M I should be able to handle it, even if you do. You should be set.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. And if anything starts getting a little wacky, Harold's gonna run down to your rescue.
Okay.
Should be fine.
Alarm when we say.
Exactly.
Empty out the building.
Fine. When we come down here, I'll introduce you. We're at the end of the meeting. Most likely, there's gonna be seats here, so I'll sit behind you while you're presenting, right next to you, if you want me to forward the slides.
I gave the lady a tip and then she like gave me a hug and she gave me like this is the sweet thing I've never seen. It's not sage. But I have to ask you what it is. She gave me like a, kinda like a sage bundle, but it's not sage. It's like. I don't know. It's like, it's not sage. Alright, might be a olive bundle. I've never seen a napkin. But it was like, like, you know, green. Yeah.
I love how.
We know this in issue.
It's 2000.
I hope so.
Imperial Bee.
Good to see you again.
Paloma wasn't there. I was surprised that Paloma didn't. I think she might have made the, uh, might have made the tour this morning.
Yeah, maybe she did. I don't know if there was, you know, an in-house process and maybe.
No, she was invited.
Good.
It was a very, very, by, by part.
Good. That's good.
Hey Phil.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mayor, we need to adjourn the 2:30 meeting.
That's right. Thank you for reminding me. Ladies and gentlemen, we're back from closed session. I'd like to ask our city attorney to tell us what happened in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session. Uh, council member Mitchell was not present and did.
She was.
She came. She came late, later. Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Goble is disqualified for the conflict of interest issue that we mentioned before. The city council did not take any action on the closed session item, uh, so there's nothing to report.
Thank you. Uh, this brings us to adjournment. The joint regular meeting of the El Cajon City Council and the Council Housing Authority held this 22nd day of April, 2025 is adjourned till right now. We are going to start our next meeting. Welcome to the El Cajon City Council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I'd like to ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
All council members are present.
Would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance to remain standing for a brief moment of silence afterwards?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The city clerk posted orders of adjournment of the April 8th, 2025 meeting and the agenda of the April 22nd, 2025 meeting in accordance with state law, city council and housing authority policy. We have a proclamation on today's agenda for International Firefighters Day, and will Chief Coe please come to the podium and receive the proclamation? And while he's coming, I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas International Firefighters Day is observed annually on May 4th to honor the dedication, bravery and sacrifices of firefighters worldwide. And whereas firefighters put their lives on the line every day to protect communities, homes and the environment from the devastation of fires, as well as respond to other emergencies with courage and professionalism. And whereas firefighters demonstrate unwavering commitment and selfless assist, often working under challenging conditions to ensure the safety and well-being of others. And whereas International Firefighters Day provides an opportunity for communities to express gratitude and appreciation for the invaluable contribution of firefighters to society. And whereas International Firefighters Day highlights the exemplary courage exhibited by firefighters as they fulfill their duty to serve and protect. Now therefore, I, Bill Wells, Mayor of the City of El Cajon, together with the city council, do hereby proclaim the 4th day of May, 2025 to be International Firefighters Day in the City of El Cajon. We call upon all citizens, organizations and government agencies to join in recognizing and honoring the dedication, bravery and selfless service of firefighters worldwide. Let us express our deepest gratitude and support for the heroes who risked their lives to keep our communities safe. Chief Coe, thank you. Well, thank you, Chief Coe. And I just want to point out that our, uh, fire department is recognized nationally. It's, uh, I think, I, I'm biased, but I think it's the best agency in the county. And, uh, we're very proud of all the work that you do. Please give our best to all the firefighters under your command. Agenda changes. Does staff have any, have any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, no changes to the agenda.
How about council members? No. Okay. That brings us to consent items. Consent items are routine matters enacted by one motion according to the recommendation listed below. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member or person in attendance may request discussion of a consent item at this time. Council members, do you wish to poll any of the consent items? Alright, staff?
No, sir.
Alright. I'll make a motion then to approve the consent items. Please vote.
And for the record, sir, there were no, uh, speed cards for consent items?
Appreciate that.
And motion carries by unanimous vote?
Thank you. We're now at public comment. At this time, any person may address a matter within the jurisdiction of the city council, housing authority, successor agency to the El Cajon Redevelopment Agency that is not on the agenda. Comments relating to items on today's agenda are to be taken at the time that the item is heard. State law prohibits discussion or action on items not on the agenda. However, city council and housing authority members may briefly respond to statements or questions, and an item may be placed.
have to worry about taking his children to school. He will not bear the existential dread members of this community have to face every single day. At a February city council session this year, Phil Ortiz sat in that chair and waxed poetic about our laws being the envy of the world while at the same sentence voices disdain for SB 54, an established California law tested by the federal courts. A law meant to prevent, excuse me, prevent the entanglement of state police with federal authorities such as ICE. He and the entire council were warned about the abuses ICE has, is, and continues to engage in. The reckless harassment, detainment, and deportation of not just American citizens, not just harmless tourists, but innocent peoples with no criminal record. Mr. Ortiz, if you admire our laws so much, then where is your outrage at the blatant disregard of due process? The very foundation of our legal system? By seeking to circumvent SB 54, you have failed in upholding the city code of ethics and conduct. By seeking to cosponsor a bill that at the time didn't even have official text, you have failed in your due diligence. By publicly inviting some of the worst elements of the Trump administration to our city, you have failed as a steward of El Cajon. Thank you.
Dr. Joanna Benavides?
Hi, Joanna Benavides here again. I've been here before for this political circus. I have to keep coming back for some reason. I witnessed you vote on the same issue three times. That's a deliberate circumvention of the democratic process. And since you don't listen to facts or even personal anecdotes of trauma, I just have questions. So what kind of man entrusted to represent his community sells out for political theater? Ortiz, a self-proclaimed Latino leader, answered that question when he voted to force our esteemed, trained, and certified police to collaborate with Rent-A-Cops from the private company that contracts with ICE, GEO Group, which the president is making a profit from. He targeted the very families he swore to protect. For three hours, mothers, pastors, children, spiritual leaders, teachers, and combat veterans begged Ortiz to reject this cruelty. They warned him about children fearing their parents won't come home from school and cited empirical, or come home, and they cited empirical data showing ICE raids terrorized communities and children, not criminals. Yet after secret meetings with Trump allies, he sold out his district's 35% Latino population and signed my own and my family's vulnerability into law. Ortiz claims his Mexican ancestry justifies partnering with an agency that cages asylum seekers, including children. He dismisses the echoes of history, literally scoffing at warnings that El Cajon's ethnic communities now view police fearfully. What privilege that is. Families are canceling doctor's appointments. Small businesses, including yours, Ortiz, are losing revenue. Trust has crumbled. Unrest is felt. And we've seen this before. Men who abandon courage for perceived power. But here's the difference: We have recall petitions, we have freedom of assembly, and we have lawsuits fighting all this racism. The state auditor, the Department of Justice, the DA, and the Attorney General have all accepted my submitted complaints. History will ask one final question. What kind of people stood by and let this happen? Hmm. Not me. It's never gonna be me. Not us. It's never gonna be us. So recall Phil Ortiz. He's a danger to our Latino community. And I have one more thing I'd like you to hear. This is a pregnant woman being apprehended by ICE.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wells and the rest of the council. My name is Tracy Till, and I am speaking today as a private citizen. I am not here in my role as an elected official. And my words do not represent any governing body I serve on. I am here as a mom, an East County resident, and someone who is sick and tired of watching good people be targeted for doing the right thing. Let me cut to the chase. The idea of recalling Councilmember Phil Ortiz is outrageous, dishonest, and frankly dangerous. Phil has said a few times, "If the federal government shut down today, we wouldn't feel those effects for days or even weeks. But if our local government shut down, we would experience the consequences immediately." And he's right. Local government is where the rubber meets the road. It is where decisions are made that impact our daily lives. Phil understands that. That's why he, alongside with Mayor Bill Wells and this council, recently voted to work with ICE and federal officials with regard to violent, criminal non-citizens in our community. Let me say that again. Violent criminals, not moms trying to make a better life, not kids crossing the border. We're talking about individuals convicted of crimes, some with serious and violent records. And somehow, you have people out here trying to paint Phil as the villain? Give me a break. What Phil and this council did was put the safety of El Cajon residents first. You stood up not just for the city, but for all of East County. And most importantly, for our children. That vote sent a message. We will not be bullied, we will not be intimidated, and we will not sacrifice public safety on the altar of political correctness. And Phil Ortiz, he didn't flinch. He stood his ground with conviction, with clarity, and with the kind of courage we desperately need more of in public office today. So let me make myself clear. Phil is not just my friend. He is a mentor. He is the kind of elected official who listens, who leads, and who fights like heck for the people he represents. And let's not sugarcoat it, he's a darn good one. This recall effort, it's not about justice. It's about revenge, and we are not going to stand for it. Thank you.
I have to follow that up? Oh, that was so good. Okay, hi, my name is Susan Powell. I am an El Cajon resident. And not only that, I grew up with Phil Ortiz. We went to high school together. This is an amazing man. And I'm just so confused. The resolution was only to get violent criminals, rapists, and murderers. You guys are here, you're here for that? That's what you're here for? Whoops, sorry. Shouldn't have done that, shouldn't have done that. Okay, so, back to where we are. Phil is an incredible man. He has done amazing things for the city of El Cajon. Four years. And we absolutely need to keep him on the city council. I'm very sad to see that the rhetoric and the division from CNN and MSNBC, I don't watch Fox News, thank you though, I'm shocked to see that this is penetrating this room so much for such a good man, such a good man. I just spoke with two officers right outside the door, and I asked them to your comment. I said, "Are you overworked working with ICE right now?" They said, "We don't work with ICE." They don't work with ICE at all? They don't work with ICE at all. So you guys are sitting here telling people that our police force is overworked and underpaid, and that they're in danger because our city council told them they have to work with ICE. And they don't. They're not working to deport anybody. So you're out here spreading blatant lies, just like the media, Fox, and CNN, that you say you hate. And you're causing massive amounts of division. And you're doing horrible things. And it's just sad. You should actually be working to reform immigration policy if it's so close to your heart. Reform it. Don't do things like this isn't doing anything for you. This isn't going after Trump. So I just, I ask you today to really, I don't know, really look at where you're getting your information from, because it's all wrong. It's all wrong. And this is a really good man, a good family man, a good council man, serving on one of the best in California. And you're very lucky to be in their presence.
Next speaker is Steve Djanaka.
Hello, thank you. I am here with the group that's recalling Councilmember Phil Ortiz. My comments are going to be very brief. I think it's outrageous. You have disenfranchised and shocked the immigrant community in El Cajon, and also in District 4. Excuse me. I am a retired Marine, 24 and 1/2 years service, and this reminds me, this idea of ICE cooperating with the police department, it reminds me of Soviet Russia. Part of my father's family was sent there. It's breaking up immigrant families, people being snatched from their work, can be from their homes, you name it. Very bad precedent. Can't happen. Shocking.
My name is Youssef Miller, and I'm compelled to come here today to speak about the recall Phil Ortiz, what a wonderful sound, to recall Phil Ortiz. The betrayal that the community felt has propelled me to come here. The sadness in the tears of mothers and their children that show up to work, their workplace to see if their husband or wife will be released from ICE as they take them out of here. This is not an issue of whether the community is safe or not. That is a red herring. That is a smokescreen. We are talking about families. We're talking about children. We're talking about wives and husbands. We are trying to be painted as pro-criminal. That is not the case here. No one wants pro-crime. But we do want due process. That is in the Constitution. The only thing we're asking for is a constitutional right for people to have due process. And the Constitution says, whether you're a citizen or non-citizen. So there is absolutely no constitutional right for us to even be entertaining this. But we have people with agendas. We have people who are trying to kiss the ring. And that ring has harmed families. Some good man has signed a paper to tear children away from their parents. Some good man has destroyed families. Some good man has taken innocent people and sent them to concentration camps and detention centers. Some good man has done that. No, I don't feel proud to be anybody's presence that has done something like that. We're here to speak truth. We're here to speak for the innocent. We're here to speak for the family. We're not here to speak for criminals. We can't be painted as pro-crime, and please don't fall for that. Please don't shy away from that. Please don't cower to that label. That label should miss you because we are here as the people. We are here as the citizens, and we're here to speak up for the Constitution and for the rights of those people who fall under it within the continental United States. This is what we're seeing. And as brothers and sisters, we're talking about their families and how it impacted their families before, and we're seeing a reintroduction of that type of living today. When they did the Fugitive Slave Act, black people were running and hiding and scared. Black people, whether they were enslaved or not, they were running and hiding. They had to run and ask for people to take care of them, ask for city members and council members to look out for them, because there was a border that they said they couldn't cross, and that was the Mason-Dixon line. Now we have another border, same thing is happening. So as they see our Latino brothers and sisters in their family, and our indigenous brothers and sisters see our Latino brothers and sisters in their family, I see my Latino brothers and sisters in my family and what has happened in this so-called legal process. It is anti-democratic. It is unconstitutional, and you should stay away from it. Recall Phil Ortiz, what a wonderful sound.
Next speaker is RJ Lucchese.
Hey, good afternoon comrades. Appreciate everybody's comments. Good afternoon, council. My name is Reverend RJ Lucchese, and I'm here in support of recalling Phil Ortiz. Of course, many of us here in the council chambers are aware of the recent right-wing provocations of the majority of this council. But to remind the chambers, both anti-immigrant and anti-free speech measures have been passed by the majority of this council just within the last couple months. Pure grandstanding. And despite what dishonest politicians will tell you, what they're quoted, both measures have the full intent to intimidate, threaten, and target our community, right here, significant immigrant and Muslim communities, right here in El Cajon. And as such, these men do not actually represent the community, but they stand in opposition to the people they claim to serve. Both recent measures put forth by this council and Phil Ortiz himself gives us nothing more than an extremely unpopular, xenophobic, and quite frankly racist agenda, all in an effort to advance your own political careers. What's going on, guys? But there are consequences to these provocations, and ending the political career of Phil Ortiz before it even starts is step one in that community response. And as an ordained clergy person who spent their entire life in Christian ministry, I'm extremely disappointed, I'm offended, but not at all surprised that many of you lean on your own Christian faith to justify these dangerous agendas against your neighbors in your own community. Applicable to many of you at the council, but again, speaking directly to you, Phil, Pastor Phil, yes? Have you forgotten the words of Jesus? Do you reject the gospel of Christ? Jesus Himself in Matthew 25, read your Bibles. "You that are accursed depart from me into the eternal fire prepared for the devil and his angels; for I was hungry, and you gave me no food; I was thirsty, and you gave me no drink; I was a stranger, and you did not welcome me." Truly, I tell you, just as you did to the least of these, you did to me. Recall Phil Ortiz and join the fight to organize your community.
Jose Cortez?
Hello, all of the people who came out on a Tuesday to speak truth to the city council, who often will sit glazed-eyed and try to ignore the truths that are being spoken mere feet away from you. So obviously, truth isn't the way to get a message across. I think we're going to have to talk about just our experiences and also the audacity of somebody who claims that government is this crazy authority that's destroyed so many lives while simultaneously using their position in local government to target the most vulnerable people in our said society. The audacity of a religious person sheltering themselves in the sheep's wool of virtue while like in their actions doing the exact opposite, as we heard, is just completely discouraged and frowned upon in the Bible. I was born and raised in East County. I've said this before to the city council many times. My father graduated from El Cajon Valley High School. I have, when we moved into like El Cajon, like when I actually came into El Cajon from Lakeside, the first thing my neighbors came and did was, they were white people, they came and told me about how dangerous it was because of the racists and all that stuff like that, but they had my family's back. And that era of El Cajon, that era of East County is gone, it seems, now with this iteration of the city council. What we're seeing now in this room is not this pro-crime depiction from the far-right that we're seeing and from the Beckeys of our society. What we're seeing right now is the people's democracy in play. Phil, you ran basically unopposed. You do not represent the constituents of the 4th district. And for that reason, for the betrayal, for the blood that is on your hands, and for the absolute sacrifices you've made of our community for your limited and very vapid political career, you are facing justice. And this is people's justice. It is just the beginning. We're going to organize a real political movement here in El Cajon. It's going to have the characteristics of the people who actually make society function, not people who show up four days a month and try to act like they have some sort of authority over all of us to make us run and hide and fear. If anything, we're going to be knocking on doors, and we're going to go around and meet our neighbors. We're going to connect each other to resources, and we're going to learn to stand up to the Phil Ortiz's and the Bill Wells of society. We're going to organize our own candidates, and we're going to make sure that democracy isn't just this idealized image that people talk about, you know, in their quiet little back rooms or when they feel like they can spare it. We're going to have real people's democracy again here in El Cajon. Recall Phil Ortiz, obviously.
We have 11 more speakers. The next one is Brenda Hammond.
Hi. Hi, Graham. Wow. I didn't bring my popcorn today. I didn't bring my balloons today. I should have. I came here, I came here to get, to run away. What did I tell you about my hat? So I grew up in Lemon Grove. I hung out with the rich kids in La Mesa who became snooty. And when I would run away, I always would come to El Cajon to be safe. And I still feel safe. If some of these people lived or worked in other cities in San Diego County, they would be happy to be in El Cajon. Thank you.
Lily Schworm?
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen. Let people speak and don't catcall from the audience. It's really not necessary. You're getting a chance to speak and spew your, you're getting, well, no, that's fine. I'm not, you're getting a chance to spew all your hate, and nobody's getting involved. But, but when other people, when others, when other people speak, you're going to have to speak, or I'm going to clear the room or have you removed.
Hi, my name's Lily Schworm. I know many of you in this room. I am not here today to speak as a member of the Cajon Valley School Board. I'm here to speak as a longtime resident of El Cajon. I've lived the vast majority of my 43 years here in El Cajon, growing up on Melody Lane, and I currently live on Avocado, near Avocado in Washington, in Phil's District 4. Not only has Phil been a valuable voice of wisdom and experience during the last 10 years, but really, he's been a friend for an even longer amount of time than that. Interestingly, this isn't my first time here in the city council chambers. I actually ran for city council before Phil's time here. And before that, I came to meetings for over a year to get chickens legalized in El Cajon. Now, that seems minor to what we're discussing today, but the point is that many of us in this room are no stranger to what it means to be civically engaged, and I'm here to represent my spot in District 4. Again, living here a long time, I have seen the changes in our city in with, you could say, the new city council, that includes Phil. Some of you have been on at that time. And I've had the honor of signing Phil's petition during the last two election cycles to get his name on the ballot. I've had the honor of walking around with him to introduce him to my neighbors and tell the people that I know why I wholeheartedly support Phil. Now, why do I support Phil? Because we share many common values along with many conservatives in our community. We can nitpick and define our differences, but the reality is we share more in common than we do differently. The one issue that I appreciate about Phil is that he carefully weighs the different things that come before this council, and he votes based on his care for the community and his convictions. When Phil told me the first time that he was intending to run for city council, the one question that I asked him, I said, "Would you be willing to act on your conviction even if it meant sacrificing the unity that you could have through compromise on the city council?" And he told me wholeheartedly, yes. That's why I respect and support Phil Ortiz. Thank you.
Daniel Bigford?
Hello, boys and girls, and welcome to the Phil Ortiz Show. I'm Dan Bigford. I'll be your host for the next couple of minutes here. You guys are doing a fantastic job. You guys don't get near enough praise for what you do. You do this, you know, you do this, you know, just a few hours a month, a few, we know what it's really like. Okay, it's a few hours of public in these meetings and hours and hours and hours you guys have to work behind the scenes and going to different functions and things. But you know, you guys are doing a great job. You know, the issue here has been described as a dangerous public resolution. And I hear people from North County and South County out here in the audience, I've seen them out here before, at other meetings before. They're coming, you're getting, you know, countywide recognition, you know, so take it for what that is. But this dangerous public resolution. Okay, so what we've done is we, you know, or you have decided to go ahead and participate with federal law enforcement. And so what everyone's saying here right now is that there's all these raids and all these people that are being arrested and without due process. Well, how many in El Cajon? I got my list here. Oh, there aren't any. That's right. Okay. There aren't any in El Cajon. Since this resolution just two months ago, there aren't any raids in El Cajon. You know?
Mr. Bigford? I think what you're trying to say is that that happened in the county. Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes. It's happened in the county. It's happened nationwide. Okay? But since your resolution, participation by our law enforcement has not really made this dramatic effect where everybody's getting, where families are getting separated and so forth. It's just not happening. It's a basic fallacy of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Perez?
Do we have sanitizer for this microphone?
Is that a racist comment, sir? It's really, that kind of racism is not accepted here.
There was no racism. I just want sanitizer for this.
That was really uncalled for.
How is that, can you explain how it's racist?
Sir?
I want some sanitizer.
Okay.
I'm going to continue, Mr. Wells.
Pardon me. If I misunderstood you, I apologize.
Okay. I accept your apology.
It's a frustrating group.
I would like to start by sharing my experience as a lifetime member of this community with the council. My parents immigrated from Durango, Mexico to this beautiful city of El Cajon for a better opportunity. They both became legal residents with the help of Reagan Amnesty Program and now have citizenship. Through sports at Total Park, Renette Park, further education at Community College, with consistent resilience, I have managed to overcome adversity and am now successfully living a family, raising them, living the American dream. I'm here for the long run. I've witnessed and welcomed diversity arrived from different countries, charter schools raised for excellence and justice in education. I'm now questioning the decisions made by the community representative with this Trumpism. The unfortunate voting of SB 54 has sparked an awakening of the community's rise to action. Somos Latinos en Accion. As a lifelong resident of District 4, Phil Ortiz, my name is Carlos Perez, and I further request your resignation from this council.
Hello, I'm a little nervous. My name's Nicole DeCarvalho. I am a friend of Phil Ortiz. And this is my husband, Timothy DeCarvalho. He's a citizen of Brazil. And from personal experience, Phil has come alongside of me personally. When my husband was up for a green card when we applied after a year of marriage, Phil offered to write a recommendation letter to help my husband in the green card process. He went above and beyond. I did not ask him, I did not solicitate this thing. He just offered it, and he helped us every step of the way. And he even wanted to encourage my husband when he becomes a citizen to swear him in. And he would love to do that, and he has encouraged people and immigrants from our, both of our perspectives. He's done nothing but encouraged that. So I'm sorry that your experience was different, but for me, and I've known Phil for over 20 years, and he has been nothing but encouraging to the American dream and for protecting and fighting for my family that is with an immigrant. So thank you, Phil.
And also, I remember when I came to the United States five years ago, and my first apartment was here by Magnolia. And I remember talking to someone around, and they said, "Well, you know where you're living?" And I said, "No, I don't know where I'm living." And they said, "Well, across the street, maybe between 30 years is like most places." And they said, "Well, across the street, maybe between 30 years is like most places that the people was kidnapped and human trafficking." And right now, I'm going to ask everyone here, where the guys stay, staying the people was?
Sir, I'm sorry. You just have to address those.
But that's frustration me because I see people right now against this situation. But 30 years, 12 years ago, where those people stay? Where they fight about the people was human trafficking here in El Cajon? The city, right now, those people's fight? Where the people stay? Yeah, but you don't do nothing about. And even right now, it's still happening.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have to keep it between the speaker and the council. That's okay. That's okay. You have a... You can finish if you want.
No, no, I'm okay. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
The next speaker is Patricia Barrett?
Hi, Mayor Wells and Council. Thank you for the firefighter's recommendation or salute. My father was a 40-year fire captain, and I grew up in El Cajon. I was born at the El Cajon Valley Hospital, went to Valhalla High School. I have some concerns with what's going on in the El Cajon City Council. I hear a lot of the Trumpism call, and we're here to talk about Phil Ortiz today. One of the issues I have, and it's my sign, I just made it at the last minute, I wasn't prepared to speak, but Foothills Church puts people up on the pulpit, up on the stage, and what they do is they unlawfully, it's against the Charter of the 990 exemption, they say, "Oh, here's Phil Ortiz, people." Oh, by the way, he's a pastor of Foothills. Vote for him. There's an audience of how many? 2,000 or so? How many services do you have? So of course, if I tell people, "You want to be a politician..." I don't know if you, Bill Wells, also got elected through Foothills Church. "You want to go to Foothills if you want to be a politician in this town." So I'm going to be out there protesting also at Foothills about this. But we do need to recall you, Phil. So one of the things which you may not be aware of, under the Biden administration, there were 1,500 deportations a day, and it's in the record of Border Patrol and ICE. 1,500 a day under Obama, more under Biden than Obama, and way more than under Trump. And we have nowhere near that today, but they were legal and lawful deportations. I encourage you to look that up on the Border Patrol ICE statistics, because I've looked it up more than once. 1,500 a day under Biden. And some of those were leaving because of COVID, because they wanted to go home during the COVID time. Okay, so that's not Trump just... I mean, Biden saying, "Hey, we're deporting..." Excuse me, I'm nervous. Okay? So this is crazy, and the whole thing's crazy because this is all hyped up. What Trump is brainwashing you guys, because my other sign talked about DOGE. DOGE was created on January 20th of 2025. It is the new government designed to overthrow our existing government. It's exactly in Project 2025. I read it last summer. I did videos on it. I'm trying to do podcasts, trying to figure out who's dissecting that. You guys are brainwashed. Phil, you're brainwashed. And also, you were unlawfully put up on a pedestal by Foothills Church to be a politician in this town, and that is wrong. This church is going to be... I'm going to soul protest this church. I've done a lot of soul protests. I will be out there Sunday. I... Foothills, I was baptized at Foothills, but I am not going to put up for this unholiness. You know, we do not... My father, as a fire captain, when he retired, we took care of many immigrants. We got them healthcare, got them to their homes. But you guys are brainwashed by Trump. That's the bottom line. And we are here to save our democracy, Phil, and you're destroying it.
Mayor, time's up.
I read in the paper, you're destroying it as well. Okay, thank you.
Hello, Council. Good afternoon, Michelle. Thank you for your commitment to the community. And there's going to be a post open for mayor. We really encourage you to run the race. Phil Ortiz, the last time we were here, we warned you that this was a political, a career suicide. Look at where we're at today. It's happening. We can see the look on your face. You're shaking in your boots, we see it, because you're following Bill Wells. This is the community you serve. They're here fighting against you. And I want to tell the community to not back down. The moment we backed down, the moment we thought we were in good hands, was the third time they brought up this policy, and they won because we thought, you know, we had it in the bag, we were okay, and it was passed. Three times it took you guys to pass, because we came here fighting and fighting and fighting. We shouldn't give up this fight. Even if we may lose the battle against Phil Ortiz today, we need to continue to fight. If it can happen to Kilmar Abrego, a man who came here legally the right way, as you guys so claim, it's still taken to where? El Salvador and Cacote. I've seen the prisons in El Salvador. The places you are sending these people is a death camp. They can't visit their family. They can't call their families. What crimes have they committed? Being brown. I suggest the people who came today to support you, put on brown contacts, dye your hair brown, change the color of your skin tone. Let's see if they still have that same idea that they're just going after criminals. So I want to encourage everybody to keep protesting. The fight isn't over until we've destroyed the Nazis once again. So recall Phil Ortiz, because he's not... He profits off of the back of the Hispanic community. Bill Wells as well. He wants to... Nice smirk. During the Black Lives Matter protests, during that time, you profited off the black community with that innocent black man's shooting. You profited off of it. But where are... You don't remember it? I remember reading your interview. You claimed that the community had your back when you released the body cam footage of the police officer who shot the unarmed black man. You profit off of the community, but you don't come out and support the community you say you stand for. So thank you for listening.
Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Mika. I'm here today as a first-generation immigrant. I'm a Caldean and a small business owner. I live in the city of El Cajon. When I came to this country, I came to El Cajon. I lived in El Cajon from the day one, and that was 24 years ago. I worked, I got my paperwork, I got my document, I got my citizenship, the legal way, the legal right, the legal route that's supposed to be done. Today's... I do not think that if you guys did not adopt the resolution, you guys would stop this. They are coming after Phil Ortiz, and this would not stop. This is nothing but political agenda and have nothing to do with a person. You guys could have not stopped this agenda. You guys could have not stopped ICE from deporting nobody. It's not only Latinos that have been deported. It's everybody that does not have documentation is being deported. Caldeans, any immigrant that doesn't have legal status in here is being deported. And they starting with the outlaws. So if you guys are coming here and telling me that the outlaws can stay here and we put our families in danger, then I don't know what's right nowadays no more. Anyhow, I'll finish this. I'm a board... I'm an owner in the business in the city of El Cajon, small business owner, and I'm on a board member of the Caldean Community Council. It's a nonprofit organization that works as a community service, and we do immigrant services as well. We help everybody that comes to us, which serves the Caldean Community Council, services thousands of immigrant families, border of Iraq and Middle East. We serve everybody. Everybody comes to us, doesn't matter what color they are. They are immigrant, they are more than welcome. We help them out. We put them on the right path. Okay? I stand here to support Councilmember Phil Ortiz. The accusations being made against him today are not only false, but deeply offensive to those of us who knows this guy firsthand. Phil Ortiz has been a consistent and a committed ally to immigrant community. He has supported programs that empower refugees, and he serves... He services displaced families. He did a lot of things that we came to him and asked him, and he helped us putting things together to help displaced families. Okay? He stood with us when matters the most. His actions speaks louder than any political smear campaign that we have in right here. To say he is anti-immigrant is simply not true. He has always been a friend to the Caldean community and to the immigrant that seeks better life in this country. I urge this council and public to see through these false accusations and recognize the integrity and commitment of Phil Ortiz bring to our diverse city. So please, don't listen to the political agenda that's happening behind me right here. And Reverend, when I go to church, I confess to the priest. Who do you confess to? Thank you.
We have three more speakers. The next one is Carlos Gomez Perez.
Good afternoon. Hopefully you can hear me. At the end of the day, everybody takes examples from some type of leadership, right? And this scenario that we're in right now, the leader that was supposed to be in charge of everything and ensuring that their constituents were being taken care of, and that means that whole entire city of El Cajon City was you, Bill Wells, was you failed to do that. You failed to do that by only choosing one side and ensuring that that side felt more safe or secure. You might be wondering why I'm dressed a certain way and I'm dressed in a suit like I usually come here, because I am also a business owner. Well, because this became my shield. This was the only thing I could have so that people like you wouldn't perceive me a certain way. Because at the end of the day, the only thing that we see is the color of the skin. And you can say that that's not true, but in most scenarios, it's exactly what we all do, all of us. So yeah, this became my shield, because to you guys, this weighed a lot. The fact that I got shot twice for this country, the fact that I got the third highest medal of honor that anyone in the service can receive, which for the longest time, I didn't see as an accomplishment, but at the end of the day, that's the only thing you guys respect. Someone said there was something about kidnapping, she did nothing. Guess what? I got here in 1992. I was nine years old age. Therefore, I've been here for 33 years. So what it counts down to one very important thing, I'm no longer the nine-year-old immigrant who was voiceless. I didn't have a voice. Now I do. And I have stayed quiet for so long. Why? Because I had to deal with my own stuff to survive. But now that I'm no longer needing to survive, now I got to speak for the ones that can't speak. And there's... There has been raids in El Cajon City. And the fact that you have done good things for people, hey, congrats. Thank you for helping them. The decision that was taken back two, three months ago doesn't take away from your things you did before. This is not about you're a bad person. I don't care if you're a good or bad person. I don't care. It's a decision that was made based on one point of view, like, oh, if we decide to make the decision to pass SB 54, hopefully, everybody else will go ahead and carry it through and make California no longer a sanctuary city. No, we're not trying to protect criminals. Okay? If you have never been handcuffed and put behind MIGRA because you have no papers, you can't speak. I have. So at the end of the day, just want to know what's going to happen. And unfortunately, only such a city, and it's going to go from there. So enjoy your city day.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Michelle, I'm a first-generation American. My parents came here as immigrants, but they did it the right way. And today, I work in the community. I work with all the kids in the community. Okay? I'm hearing a bunch of rhetoric over here about due process and everything else. How many of these people over here are actually profiting off of that stuff? Phil, Mr. Wells, you guys have been nothing but supportive to the group that I represent, and I appreciate that. Phil, we stand with you.
Two more speaker cards, or Mohamed Rahimi?
How many more?
Two more.
Two more.
Good afternoon, everyone. A long time ago, when I served as an attorney with US Army, which was the greatest achievement and the proudest moment in my life, I learned one thing. When we are talking about justice and democracy, there is no consideration of the status, like Muslim, non-Muslim, white, black, Latinos, African-American, nothing. There is only one thing. The justice and democracy means the same thing for every single member of the community. So that's why I'm here today, not to represent any political party or political group or interest group, but to represent my communities, and some of them are here. One of the aspects of leadership, especially in this hall, in this house, is to make decisions, discussions, policies, and plans that bring people closer to the government. This is one aspect. The other aspect of leadership, especially in this seat, in this hall, is to make decisions, discussions, policies, and plans that impact every single resident of the community, regardless of the political affiliation or religious connections. Here in the beautiful city of El Cajon, which is our home, our city, we have a lot of issues and crises, like homelessness, like housing, like employment, and a lot of other issues that impact every single member of the community, whether he or she is Republican, Democrat, independent immigrant or non-immigrant. But the question, did we see any single discussion or decision in this hall by any of these leaders that impact you positively? Did we see that? No. That's why I'm here. I'm here not to accuse any member in this hall, but I am here to raise the voice and words of my communities. And that is to ask you that you are elected to serve our communities, not to take the rights, the due process, and the freedom of our community members. That's why I'm here. That's why I am proudly supporting this group, and that's why I'm asking you, Councilmember Phil Ortiz, you should resign or you will face a recall, because you were elected to represent these people, to make a policy, to have a discussion and decision, to impact these people positively, and make positive changes in our community and especially in our district, District Four. But unfortunately, we didn't see that. So again, the meaning of democracy, justice, freedom, it's the same for me as an immigrant American, as a proud American, and as a proud resident of this city of El Cajon. And that's the same thing. That values, that justice, democracy, freedom means the same thing for you, for him, for her. There is no differences. And you, as a council member, doesn't make it different than myself. It doesn't make it different than any of these...
Sir, your time's up.
Yes, so I support the recall or ask a council member to resign, because we need leaders who serve us and who make positive changes in the community regardless of political or religious affiliations. Thank you.
Councilman Ortiz, you have betrayed us. You have betrayed a community... Hold on. ...that has trusted you. You have betrayed nearly 60% of the Latinos and Middle Eastern residents here in El Cajon. You chose to co-sign with him for a policy that harms us. I spoke to you, and you were very firm when you said, "I want to get agua de la tren out of here." If you were more involved in the community, if you would just stepped out of your door and even come to school events, you would see that that is not the cause here. I'm very disappointed to hear that you're working on being a pastor, because to me, that is just hypocrisy. How can you use the word of God for the things that you do? I don't understand, Phil. In a way, I feel kind of sad, because I thought we had a little working relationship here, especially in our community, but now I just feel so betrayed. I feel upset. I feel angry, and I want you to step down. I think that's the best for you right now, for your business, for your pastoring. You need to step down, or you will face the consequences. Recall Phil Ortiz, 2025. Recall Phil Ortiz, 2025.
Could you answer?
Mr. Mayor, can I say something really quick?
Of course.
To the public, one of my mentors told me that the strongest person in the room is the person that has nothing to hide. Can you stay out, because I want to address some people here. Sir, no? Okay. All right.
Charles.
Yeah. All right. The strongest person in the room has nothing to hide, and I have nothing to hide. When this resolution, if you read it, it solely is my platform to speak out against SB 54. Because SB 54 doesn't cover a ton of crimes. Doesn't cover arson, doesn't cover trespassing, doesn't cover burglary. And that's wrong. And, and if this resolution was just about public safety, I'm not angry at anybody. I don't resent anybody here holding up the signs or throwing accusations at me. It's been happening my whole life. I went to Santana in the 90, in the 2000s, and my friends got beat up by white supremacists. I told the East County Magazine about this in my interview in 2020, and I dealt with white supremacists my whole life because of my last name. So I'm not white enough for them. And then the Latino community is rejecting me too. So I found myself in the middle. I don't know what to do about that. I've got nothing to hide. With this resolution, it made a lot of my really good friends and family members not like me because it wasn't Trumpy enough. It wasn't MAGA enough. I've lost support. And then here's the opposite of people saying it's too Trumpy. I find myself in the middle. I don't know if Mrs. Branham is in, in here, but, but to go back to it, I know what it's like to be targeted for racism in the Food for Less parking lot at Santana, where people were such reckless hate that I saw and I faced. And it led to, eventually led to the shooting at Santana. So I know what it's like, to your point. And I don't know what to do, I honestly don't know what to do being in the middle. I'm stuck in the middle of two sides, and this is always about public safety, about me using this platform to speak out against SB 54 because it doesn't cover, doesn't cover those things. And I want to keep our community safe. So to the Pachacos, if you're listening, I'm still willing to help you with the El Cajon Valley School Board to, to increase your enrollment numbers. You showed me your school, and it's beautiful, and I think you're doing great stuff. Ms. Branham, I think you left. I called you and I reached out to you because I saw one of your videos online, and I respect what you said, where you make a distinction between immigrants, that they're not all the same, that there's nuance. So I love your ideas, and I think you should continually keep having that conversation in the public square because we need to make distinctions between these people. Mr. Carlos, I love your idea about the, I love your idea about the Veterans Memorial that you came and talked to us about. It's outstanding. Donnie O'Malley from Vet TV, I went to college with him, and he does a lot of good stuff for the community, and I've reached out to him to see if we can partner with him. So like I said, I have nothing to hide. And Violet, you know, you have my cell phone number. You can call me anytime you need something. Ms. Branham has my cell phone number, the Pachacos have my cell phone number. I didn't know everybody was going to come to speak on my behalf and support, but I appreciate it. So that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much. We have two public hearings on today's agenda.
Mayor, excuse me, will you receive one last speaker card, if you will allow it?
Sure, one last, but this will be the last one unless so.
And it's Andrew Lower.
Sorry, I'll be quick. I don't know what I walked into today, but I'm just looking for paint on the road. Really cheap, really simple. There's First Street, there's Second Street, and Greenfield. Lots of kids walk to school to Greenfield Middle, and they ride their bikes. And Greenfield kind of sucks on that strip, and I've seen kids face plant on their bikes, and there's not really a sidewalk. So if we can get like a, a shared road bike sign on that road.
I'll tell you what we'll do. If you leave us your information.
And Mr. Mayor, I believe that section of Greenfield is actually the county of San Diego's jurisdiction. It's not in the city limits. I think it's a great suggestion, but we have no authority to paint those in a county.
Well, Joel Anderson, his office should be able to help. I'm sorry, can we just check it out, make sure that we?
Can you call your people to tell their people, please?
We can, we can reach out to their office and try to help you. Because we don't want kids to get hurt.
Yeah, yeah. It's bad.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, question or a question? So in order, if I wanted to do something, something different in the city?
Sir, 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 come on up.
A question I have, wanted to do something different to the city in a certain, certain street, we'll have to do is come up here and ask for your permission and see how we can do that, make that happen.
If you wanted to do what?
A change, because you're talking about painting for safety.
Oh, he's, he's not suggesting painting himself. He's asking us to do it for him.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could always come up to the city council and, and make any suggestion you want. That's, we're more than happy to, and you know, if it's, if he had lived in the city of El Cajon or that street a bit, we would have sent a traffic engineer out there to check out his complaint, and more, more often than not, we would put a stop sign or, you know, so thanks.
And Mr. Mayor, as a reminder, our residents don't have to come to a council meeting to ask for things, too. They can always reach out to staff, the council members, our emails are on, on our website. So we encourage folks to reach out to us.
We have, we have an app called, an app called My El Cajon, where you can make comments or suggestions or send pictures of graffiti or there's, and we really appreciate your input.
No, it wasn't graffiti. I wanted to change something in Malleson going on the freeway, the eight. There's only one, one line is carpool, the other one's not. But if you can make the actual carpool lane on the left-hand side and make that U-turn, it would alleviate traffic altogether. So I'm asking, who would I be able to talk to about that?
That would probably be Caltrans.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah. So, all right, we're gonna move on. Counsel, do you, anybody need a break? Or we, let's take five minutes, and we'll come right back. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna continue. There are no written communications on today's agenda, and I'm gonna skip over item number 10. I'm gonna go to item number 11, which is a zoning code update, and then I'll have staff tell us about this.
Mayor and City Council, thank you very much. Could I have Station 1?
Mayor, before we get started, this item involves a changing of part of the zoning code, and Mr. Shute will take care of going through that. There's one section in the ordinance that's being proposed, Section 20, and it involves property owned by Kaiser Hospital Foundations, as we discussed, as you discussed in closed session at 3, 2:30. Mr. Goble is disqualified, and I'll let him make his disqualification statement. He'll give it, he has to tell why he's being disqualified. But the idea is, we will take up the testimony for that element only at this time and have a straw vote on that section. Mr. Goble will be out of the room, and then, once that straw vote's taken, we'll come back and go through the rest of the ordinance, all the other changes that are being proposed, and Mr. Goble can then participate in that.
Okay, I am disqualified because I live less than 500 feet from affected property. Does, does he need to be disqualified from the entire proceedings or just one aspect?
Just this, we're gonna take up Section 20 of the ordinance that deals with his disqualification.
Okay, so we'll deal with that first, and then we'll bring you back, Steve. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let me start first with an introduction of the proposed amendments to the El Cajon Municipal Code, or specifically Title 17, which is the zoning code. The proposed zoning code amendments were initiated by the City Council over the last several months, and they focus on housing and large-scale use in close proximity to residential. Other minor non-substantive changes are also included to improve clarity and consistency in the interpretation of the zoning code, as well as a procedural update to allow the City Council to expedite the entitlement decision process. So forgive me here as I thumb through a few slides. And let me start with large-scale use of property, specifically hospitals on office professional and neighborhood commercial zones. These two zones, in alignment with the general plan, are designed to have uses that are compatible with adjacent and nearby residential developments, nearby residential uses. Suitable uses within these zones typically have hours of operation that are compatible with residential development, typically not extending into the late evening or early morning hours. Furthermore, they are typically of minor scale relative to the nearby residential developed areas. Now, through staff's analysis, the conduct of large-scale, regional-serving, 24-hour-day hospital would be inconsistent with the general plan, as well as with the OP and the CN zones. Staff analyzed 327 parcels that are currently zoned OP and CN. And with that analysis, staff has recommending to the City Council that the land use table, the commercial land use table, be changed to reflect where a conditional use permit was once, or is currently allowed, or excuse me, is a process that is allowed in the OP zone and CN zone, re-replaced with an X. An X means that it's not permitted or not allowed with the corresponding use. But I'd also like to note that a conditional use permit is still required for any general commercial and regional commercial zone property. And staff is available to answer any questions regarding this proposed amendment.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Before we have speakers come up, Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? No? All right. Then, the public hearing is open, and Angela, I'd like to call up any speakers that we have.
Yes, sir. We have three speakers. The first one is Skylar Denniston.
Mr. Denniston, welcome.
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor, Mayor Wells. My name is Skylar Denniston. I represent Kaiser Foundation Hospitals, and we acquired the site at, this would be Greenfield in Maine, some time ago. This was formerly the El Cajon Valley Hospital, about 25 acres. We acquired the site for the sole purpose of developing a medical hospital there at that location. In fact, we've had numerous conversations, you know, with city staff, including not too long ago, talking about our timeline for that hospital in this very chamber. So lo and behold, we were a little bit surprised to learn that last week, planning commission downzoned that site to prohibit hospitals at that location, despite the fact that we received no notice, and that I was having a conversation with the city manager that very day. It just wasn't communicated to me. Now, I understand that the city would like to see that site developed with a hospital or just developed. So would we. We would like to see that site developed with a hospital. But we would like that opportunity so we can go ahead and proceed with that. You know, the removal as a hospital, as an allowable use, it's just, it's a non-starter. What we're looking for is just an opportunity to work with the city, to find some type of resolution, and how we can meet, achieve your needs, but also achieve our needs. In fact, we had a conversation with the city manager yesterday, in which we discussed opportunities for a development agreement, a member man of understanding. And we believe there was a lot of good progress that was, occurred in that meeting. However, a decision can't be made in 24 hours. So respectfully, we ask that this item be continued, so we would have an opportunity to meet with staff, to talk about how we can actually meet, to achieve these goals. to meet with staff, to talk about how we can actually meet, to achieve these goals. Because we would like to commit to building a hospital, state of our hospital for this community. And we do understand that, well, we feel like we need to have an opportunity, so, to really move this conversation forward. So for this reason, I respectfully request that this item be continued, so we have an opportunity to discuss it in greater detail.
How much time do you need?
Well, we're asking for 30 days to continue the item, so we would have an opportunity to talk about how we can structure for that site to be developed.
Do you really think that in 30 days, you can come back with a plan that puts construction of a hospital within, say, five years?
I would say that continuing this item starts that conversation about what can be achieved. I can't speak to exactly what could occur. I need to tackle what's before us right now, so we can have that conversation. But I do want to be clear, we have been in this hearing back in December of 2022, when the specific plan was adopted, to do just that, to develop the site with a hospital site, and we were clear about our timeframes then. I don't understand why we're having this conversation now.
When do we start this process? Either one can answer me. I mean, I've been on the council a long time. It seems like a long time ago that we entitled this.
Correct. I think in 2012, long before I got here, there was an expectation that Kaiser would have a hospital built by 2019. And so, fast forward, until 2021, we started having something, we started engaging with Kaiser again about, hey, 2029 has come and gone, where are you at? Or 2019's come and gone, where are we at right now? And we were told that entitlement would start, this is 2021, entitlements would start this calendar year, with construction beginning in 2030. Then, at the hearing that was referred to by Mr. Denniston, we were informed that entitlements would begin in 2030, with construction, I believe, it was, I think it was said 2036, maybe 2035. My fear is this, 2035 is going to roll around, or 2030's going to roll around, and we're told it's another five years, another five years, five years. Thus far, no decision, there's nothing been in Kaiser's decision-making process that gives me confidence that a hospital can be built in five years. However, if the council would like to entertain an opportunity to have a development agreement that would require them to build a hospital, then we can engage in a conversation with them about that.
Well, I'd like to hear all the speakers, first of all, the questions before we decide on that. But, you know, if you start dating a girl in 2012, and you say, we'll be married by 2019 for sure, and then now it's 2025, you know, I think she'd have a reason to start downing your veracity. And so, what I'm trying to say is, the patience has run thin of the council. That property is an eyesore, it causes problems throughout the city, it attracts homelessness, it's ugly. Our constituents hate it, and they're screaming at us to do something about this. And so, if you want to, if you want, I'm inclined to say, yeah, let's go ahead and see, give the 30 days, see if we can come up with a development agreement, but it's got to be tangible. So, anyway. Did you have anything else you wanted to say, sir?
No, no other, no other comments.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker, it's Fernando Avila.
Hello, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon, City Council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Fernando Avila. I'm a senior counsel in the Kaiser Permanente Legal Department. Something that just struck me throughout this, you know, very brief time that we've been talking about this agenda item, is just the focus on how Kaiser hasn't developed its property. And, you know, we've tried to get them to commit, but they haven't done this. It goes back to 2012, and that's why we find ourselves here. And yet, according to the staff's presentation, the reason for doing this change is because of supposed zoning inconsistencies and land use inconsistencies. So, you know, I don't want to say that what's being put forward on the resolution isn't the real reason, but it does sound like that this is really an issue that stems from the city's frustration with Kaiser. It wants Kaiser to develop. And I will say that, you know, most property owners, every well-informed property owner would know that while a city can regulate their land use regulations, and et cetera, et cetera, one thing they can't do is they can't force them to develop. That's usually considered beyond the scope of a city's police power. But, once again, we also live in the real world, and we understand that the city has an interest in seeing economic development occur within its boundaries. So, we find ourselves in this situation right now, where I think there's an opportunity, you guys have motivated us, you know, we'd like to have a continuance, so that we could have this conversation, and see what kind of assurances we can give the city that are meaningful, and that would also make sense for us. So, from that perspective, we'd like to see the 30-day continuance, as my colleague mentioned. I mean, for our part, we, as I mentioned earlier, and as Skylar mentioned, this hospital, this property was once a hospital. We bought it for the purposes of developing a hospital, and so we have certain reasonable investment-backed expectations that if this zoning amendment were to go into effect, that that would frustrate, and we would be forced to defend our rights, as any property owner would be in that instance. But I don't think we need to get there yet. I think there's time to keep talking, and I'd like to see that happen. So, thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Last speaker is Jennifer Lynch.
Elizabeth Lynch, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Lynch. I'm a land use partner at the law firm Minat Phelps &amp; Phillips, and I specialize in land use and sequoia issues. I'm here on behalf of Kaiser. The council has already heard why we are asking for a 30-day continuance to begin the conversation and make the room in order to discuss the potential for a development agreement that can be mutually beneficial to both the city and Kaiser. But, as Kaiser's outside counsel, I have to be the bad guy, and I have to also caution that if the council moves forward with this rezoning tonight, it will be violating Kaiser's rights to equal protection. I know that the staff report mentions that what the real issue here is land use compatibility between the hospital use and the residential use, but the record is clear, that's not why we're here, and that's not why the city is considering this rezoning action. Of course, public agencies have broad police powers to amend their zoning map, but it has to be for a valid public purpose. Here, the purpose is clearly to punish Kaiser for not meeting the city's desired development timelines, and that's an equal protection issue. Notably, the only healthcare provider with any investment-backed expectations of developing a hospital in the office-professional zone is Kaiser. The only entity that is affected by this rezoning action is Kaiser. The city's past actions in correspondence, a few of which I included in my comment letter that I sent earlier this afternoon, indicates what the true intent of this rezoning is, and it is not about residential and hospital land use compatibility. The law is clear that this is not a valid use of the city's police power. California's redevelopment law was repealed in 2011. The city cannot take Kaiser's property and redevelop it for the city's desired tax revenue. The city doesn't own this property, Kaiser does. There is no evidence in the record that any residential uses will be disrupted by a hospital use on this property, which has been used as a hospital dating back to the 1950s. As recently as March 25th, as recently as yesterday, as recently as a few minutes ago in this public hearing, we're talking about how the city desires this property to be developed with a hospital. And that's inconsistent with the statements in the staff report that this is truly about land use compatibility. There are other issues here that warrant a continuance. The city has not provided Kaiser with proper notice under the government code of this action. The city has not complied with sequoia. I outline these issues in greater detail in the comment letter that I submitted earlier today. Like my colleagues, I urge the council to continue this matter for at least 30 days, so that we can talk about these issues and resolve them. Thank you.
Hold on a second. Anybody want to say anything?
No. Not to her, no. Just for general comments.
I just wondered if anybody heard in the beginning of my comments that I'm inclined to give you the 30 days. You know, so you come up here, and you tell me we're disingenuous, and you tell me you're going to take us to court. You know, we're trying to work with you, and it seems very insulting to me, the way that you've approached this.
I apologize, sir, but we have to protect our client's interest if, in fact, the city goes ahead and denies our continuance.
No, no, I understand your legal point of view. We also have attorneys that tell us we're within our rights to do this, and two things can be true at the same time. It can be true that it's an incompatible use, and it can be true that we're frustrated with your movement. We're going to move forward and judge it based upon its merits. I'm just telling you, in the future, a little less aggressive might get you more what you want.
Thank you, sir.
Does the, what, Mr. City Manager, this has been going on for longer than 2012, though, right? When was this property acquired? Am I wrong in that?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't have the data of the acquisition. I do know, and Ms. Lynch is correct, the hospital was built in the mid-1950s, however, it hasn't, it was torn down 23 years ago, so it hasn't operated as a hospital for 23 years.
Community's changed, and...
That's right. In fact, part of the zoning where the Kaiser owns is actually zoned for housing, and we're currently in a housing crisis.
Yeah.
And I think we're looking at what is a higher and better use than a hospital, and the hospital's not going to be built, which, they have the right to do that.
Right.
We need to start contemplating other opportunities that our community could benefit from.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I put myself into the public and the residents' view, where Kaiser is a huge conglomerate. They're, you know, putting their names on soccer teams, and, you know, sponsoring all these events, and then, that same resident goes to Sharp, to the emergency room, and they're being treated in the lobby. And for 20 years, that's been happening. Kaiser's spending all this money, spending all this money, and then, we're still trying to see a doctor in the emergency room in the lobby. I mean, you've got to put yourself in the position of the resident, say, that doesn't seem right, you know? And, you know, fool me once, shame on me. Fool me for 23 years, where it's just getting strong along, strong along, strong along, we're going to build, we're going to build, we're going to build, we're going to build. To the mayor's point, it just seems disingenuous. And so, when we, as a council, represent the community, we don't believe you that you're going to build a hospital. I mean, after so many years, the community doesn't believe that it's going to be a hospital. We just don't. We've gotten to the point where we just don't believe it. It's just going to be, we're going to be pushed back, and pushed aside, and pushed back, and pushed aside, for another five, 10, 15 years. And so, from a public perspective, it's, you got, in this 30 days, you've got to come to the public and convince us, otherwise, and show us, hey, we really want to be a partner in this community, we really want to serve this community. It's not just empty words, which is what the community feels right now. And so much so that these little community health organizations are popping up all over the place, because Sharp can't handle the emergency room dynamics. So, yeah, and I agree with the mayor, two things can be true at the same time. It would be nice, but it's, I need Kaiser's leadership to understand what the perception is, and if you're going to come into a community and make empty promises, that's not good business, you know? Like, you have to have some assurances and come through on your word. And so, that's what I'll, that's the advice I would give to council and to corporate, and I know, I don't even know if you represented them back in 2012 when they acquired the property, you know, so this predates a lot of us, you know, but we are where we are in this situation, and we're responsible for the decisions being made. And so, I would strongly implore, hey, come to, I'm of the same mindset of the mayor, let's give you 30 days, let's come up with a real development agreement, and it was kind of, it was so frustrating when we heard that Kaiser and Kearney was being built. We're like, oh, we got pushed out again, you know? So, keep that perspective. I know you want to be a good community partner, and so, come to us with that, okay? All right.
Might I respond?
Of course, please.
Okay. And I think that that is what the 30 days can do for us, right? We can come up with a term sheet, an E&amp;A, an MOU, a development agreement. There's lots of different things that we can do, even in just 30 days. And so, we really want to take advantage of that continuance if it's offered.
Yeah, and here's the thing, I'm in the private sector, I work with builders, you know, we all have private sector experience. I know it's a lot to build a hospital. It's not a 30-day thing. It's, and you're dealing with a lot of corporate structures, and taking time to figure that out, I get that. And I think El Cajon, I think you could say that El Cajon's been patient. I think that's a fair statement, say, we've been patient, we understand the dynamics of development, we want to give you time, and I feel like 20-something years, even 10 years is a long time, and we just don't want to, I don't want to see it go another 10 years, you know? So, let's go to the negotiating table and come up with something good, okay?
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to ask her a question?
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, I just want to clarify a couple of things. There is no, this is not a proposed rezoning of this property. 327 properties are affected by an amendment to the land use table, and that's all. Since there were 327 properties, and a notice of 300 feet from all 327 properties would far exceed 1,000 owners, in conformance with Government Code, Section 65090, public hearing was posted in the daily transcript, on the city's website, in the city's, on the city's kiosk, and in two public libraries.
Thanks. That's good clarification. I appreciate that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any more speakers?
No other speakers, sir.
All right, make a motion then to close the public hearing. Please vote. The question on the table is, do we want to...
Mayor, before we go too far, we've got a public hearing on an entire ordinance, not just this segment of the ordinance. So, rather than close the public hearing, if you just keep it open, and we'll, you can recess that while you take a discussion and a straw vote on this section.
Okay, do you need a new vote?
Yeah, you should reopen the public hearing. Nobody's left the building, so we're...
I'd like to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right. And as attorney explained, we're just, because Steve's not involved in this, we're going to take this right now. And the question is, do we want to let staff and Kaiser work out a development agreement over the next 30 days?
I think that's reasonable. Shall I make a motion on that, Mr. Mayor?
Unless anybody else wants to speak about that. Yeah, please do.
Mr. Kendrick, if that's the direction you're going, I think there's a couple of things you need to contemplate. Giving a 30-day extension, the council can continue this portion of the public hearing for 30 days, right? So you can do that without having to notice, and that puts us at May 20th. Let's be realistic. It may take us a month just to get our calendars aligned with Kaiser Permanente. So, there's two options. One is that we would come back on May 20th with a status update, with another ability to continue for another 30 days, or does the council just want to give us a bigger block of time, and then we would just have to re-notice that portion of the public hearing?
I want to ask Kaiser to weigh in on this.
Yeah.
Actually, May 20th is not a meeting date. It would go another week to May 27th.
Does that seem...
No, absolutely. I think Graham Mitchell's comments are astute. It's going to take some time to kind of hammer this out, so...
What's a realistic amount of time, do you think, the two of you?
I mean, let's say this, how about we put something on the agenda for the first meeting of July, for either bringing this back, or presenting a rough, like, progress report, or even a term sheet of some sort.
Do you agree?
Yeah, I think a draft, I think a progress report, potentially a draft term sheet by July is what we're saying. Want to make sure I understand that?
Yeah, July 8th.
July 8th.
Gary, would you like to remake the motion again with the caveat that we will discuss this on July 8th?
I'll withdraw that motion and make a new motion. We'll discuss this again on July 8th, so continue to then.
I'll second that.
Is that a good, Morgan?
All right, everybody's happy. All right. Move to the second to please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right, I'm going to get Mr. Goble, and we'll continue with the rest. All right, I'm going to get Mr. Goldblum, and we'll continue with the rest. All right, Tony, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So just as a brief reminder, the proposed zoning code amendments were initiated by the city council over the last several months with a focus on housing and other changes. So let me go through those quickly. In terms of housing, the proposed amendments align the accessory dwelling unit ordinance in the city's municipal code with state law. State law is changing every year as it relates to housing and specifically accessory dwelling units. So aligning the city's code with state law basically means that parking is no longer required with any type of ADU development, whether that's one ADU or two ADUs with a new multifamily development or eight, up to eight ADUs on an existing multifamily development that has at least eight or more units. Fire sprinklers are not required in the primary dwelling, so that's just some clarity in the city's code. And also aligning that an ADU can be as close as four feet to the property lines and anywhere from 18 to 25 feet. These are new state laws that took effect at the beginning of the year, and we're just aligning the city's code to be in conformance with state law. Another item was directed by the city council in March, I believe March 25th. And as the council knows, the existing emergency housing regulations allows up to six emergency housing units on properties that are developed with a non-governmental institutional use as the primary function of that property and located on a primary or secondary thoroughfare. The council directed staff to draft new regulations that would allow two additional units after a year's operation without issue, code compliance or substantiated violations of code nature. And then two more if eight units were operated without any issues. Each amendment, of course, is subject to an amendment of the governing administrative zoning permit, where staff would analyze the emergency housing operation in conformance with the building code, including the construction of those units and support systems such as bathrooms and shower facilities and cooking arrangements to ensure that that site would have the capacity to support either six, eight, or 10 units. And then finally, state law requires that local government may not hold more than five public hearings to consider proposed housing developments if the project complies with all applicable standards. Moreover, the law defines a hearing as any public hearing, a workshop, or similar meeting held by the department, and either at the city council or the planning commission. Now, if a city continues a hearing, the continued hearing counts as one of those five allowed hearings under state law. Staff believes that this procedural benefit and streamlining effort for housing development should also apply to any project that goes to the planning commission and then on to the city council. So the current zoning code regulations do allow a member of the city council to request a review of a resolution that either approved or denied a project by the planning commission. But the regulations do not allow the city council to move a continued hearing at the planning commission to the city council for a decision. So the proposed change of the zoning code would allow a member of the city council to move a public hearing after two public hearings and no action at the planning commission, or, again, if no action has been taken within 180 days of the first continued public hearing. And this is, I think, in line with the streamlining efforts the city council has made over the years, and one that would benefit developments that would require planning commission and other items that require a planning commission decision as well as the city council. Staff is available to answer any of those, any questions regarding those amendments. And if there are no questions, then staff recommends that, well, the planning, the public hearing is open, that you receive any testimony, then close the public hearing and move to adopt the proposed sequel resolution, and then introduce proposed ordinance approving the zoning code amendment minus the commercial land use table, which is Section 20 in the proposed ordinance.
Tony, the five hearings, that's per project?
Yes.
Okay. Questions for Tony? Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Schut, for the report. I have a question regarding the ADU height, the 18 to 25-foot height. There's been a lot of talk on news of San Diego having issues with residents having ADUs in adjacent properties, and they go up to 25, they're two-story ADUs. And they're just being able to look into, you know, their neighbor's backyard and everything. Do we foresee problems with that? I'm sorry, I missed that in reading over the agenda, but it just seems really high. But that's a state mandate?
That is correct.
So if a neighborhood was opposed to a two-story ADU, would they have any ground to stand on, or would they just have to comply with state?
They would have no recourse, and it's a ministerial permit process, so it's allowed by right and conformance with state law.
Okay, then. Thank you.
Any more speaker cards?
No more speaker cards, sir.
Make a motion then to close the public hearing.
Second.
Please vote.
Sorry, I have some comments.
We're just closing the public hearing.
Oh, public hearing. I thought we were going to leave the public hearing. Oh, that was for the difference.
Yeah. Morgan had us keep it going, yeah.
The microphone's not working, right? Words are...
All right, so please vote on closing the public hearing.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right, now comments, discussion. Steve, go for it.
Okay. Let me make sure the words are coming out correctly this time. Faulty microphone. Meridian Baptist Church has a change of opinion or desire. They want to get four more approved, up to four more approved now, rather than two, wait a year, and then two. I'm okay with that, colleagues. However, I express to them my concern that there are many things that need to be reviewed by the community development director. Fire codes, electrical codes, building codes, wastewater codes, all that apply. We want to make sure that, and because it's an administrative zoning permit, Mr. Schut has authority to grant these units. I think the check and balance is there that if we go up to 10, he still has the authority to say, "Well, I'll give you two because you haven't shown that you have electrical capacity for four." And I think that check and balance is there. So I would change Section 24, Paragraph 4, Section A, to reflect that they could have up to four after completing six compliant units.
Staff, have any objections?
May I ask, Mr. Schut, is this something that the planning commission considered as an option?
The proposed amendment did go through the planning commission first.
Yes, but was there a discussion or options provided to them to go immediately to four as opposed to a two-step process?
There was none.
You know, I fear that there's a lack of having the planning commission involvement in this and the public involved at the planning commission level by simply changing that unilaterally here at the council. You can always come back with a new amendment shortly after going to the planning commission if you want to approve it today, tonight, for first reading. You can always instruct staff, if that's the will of the council, to take it back to the planning commission to make that modification. It'll take a couple of months probably to get to that point, but I just want to warn you of that. If it's something the planning commission had considered, making it a jump to four immediately, that'd be okay. And if they said, "No, we'd want to go to two-two," but it doesn't sound like that that was ever an option presented to the planning commission.
And we don't have anybody from the planning commission, legal department, or staff who would have been at that meeting?
Well, we've got Mr. Schut here, and he knows what happens at planning commissions.
Were you at that meeting, or did you send Mr. Alvy?
Mayor and council, Mr. Alvy attended the planning commission meeting. However, in his debrief with me, he indicated that there was no discussion about that item.
Okay. So do you want to approve this as-is today and then send an amendment to the planning commission? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's the will of the council to go along with the idea that there can be a one-step up under the administrative zone permit process. Then that would, approving it today for first reading, and then ultimately adoption of this section, as we'll get to in a little later. It can, at the same time, if the council's willing or wanting to do that and go along with that idea, can direct staff to take it back to the planning commission to modify that once again.
Okay. That works for, I think, Meridian because they have the funds to do two now. And they said they want to do two more in the fall. So that gives us plenty of time to approve this, would get them going on to two now. And that gives us really the summer to modify this section if it's approved, to go straight to four, correct? By going through the planning commission.
Any objections to that? Okay, looks good. Is that what you, everything you wanted to say?
Yeah, that'll work. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Yeah, first, we need to adopt the sequel resolution. Then I'd like separate motions, a motion to introduce the, approve and introduce the ordinance. Will, the motion should include, with the exception of Section 20, please.
Okay. So I will move to adopt the sequel resolution.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
And I'll move to introduce the proposed ordinance approving the zoning code amendment with the exception of Section 20.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote. And the title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Approving an Amendment to Title 17 of the El Cajon Municipal Code, Zoning Code for Housing Commercial Land Uses, Permit Streamlining, and Other Minor Technical Changes, Revisions, and Edits."
Thank you. Well, I did not forget number 10. So let's go back to number 10, which is the adoption of new fees, modification and elimination of existing fees for the schedule of miscellaneous fees. And I'll ask staff to tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually my agenda item, and I had all these pages of a script to read to you this afternoon, but you guys took all my time. So I'll give you the shortened version. This is the annual review of fees and charges that we bring to city council. We do it at a timing so that, time it so that it will become effective at the beginning of the fiscal year, and that's why we have it in April every year. It took us a while to figure that out because normally they go into effect immediately, but the law requires a 30-day referendum period for certain development fees that we approve. If we don't have those development fees being changed, we don't bother doing it this early. The report gives you a highlight of the changes. There's a schedule that shows the changes is also attached. Of importance are a lot of fire department changes. Most of those are just a reallocation of fees into different sorts of permits and reduction of fees. The city clerk, for some crazy reason, wants to stop fingerprinting and decides that we'll delete that fee. The community development has the building as well as the planning fees. Some of those are taking a sizable jump, and as it's noticed in the report, I think, in the community development side of things, there's an, I'm sorry, not community development. I jumped ahead. The real changes are in the building department, where we modify it based on the local chapter of the International Code Council. So that valuations table takes care of how we charge building fees, the building permit fees. The engineering department, we had a split, as you know, of the public works into engineering and public works. And engineering, and so there's a lot of what the changes are, are reallocating many fees that were part of just simply public works now into engineering and others into public works and remain in public works. There's where you might find a sizable or significant, I guess, increase, but still, as with all these fees, not more than it costs to do the business here, not more than the cost for staff to process permits, review plans, and inspect projects and things of that nature. We also had, finally, the one new fee under the fire, and that is the non-emergent lift assist fee. As you may recall, we brought the ordinance to you, and this is just the second half of it, to get the fee adopted by the resolution that would apply beginning July 1. So the timing of that ordinance and this will both take place on July 1. Parks and Recreation has an additional pickleball usage fee. I'm not sure what that is, but Mr. Toronto Rude thinks it's good, so if he does, I like it, too. I just want to point out again that when conducting this process, staff is charged with making sure that they calculate the amount of the fee based on the use, or the use of staff time and costs, the money for notices and for public hearings and things of that nature. And so we meet the requirements under Article 13(c) of the California Constitution, as well as the government code, that requires that we can't charge a fee for more than it's reasonably necessary to reimburse the staff. And so all of these department heads have given me their thumbs up that they've done the correct studies and analyses and that these all meet those. So that's my report. If you have any questions, please let us know.
Thanks very much. Let me see if there are speaker cards on this item.
No speaker cards, sir.
All right. Any questions, discussion? Okay. You know what? I opened the public hearing. I have to close the public hearing, so make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right, so it's back with the council for a motion.
Move and second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right. We have one administrative report on today's agenda. Item 12 is a resolution of intention to amend the CalPERS contract for El Cajon Police Officers Association and the Police Officers Association Management Group. Staff will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. As you recall, last year during labor negotiations, we approved contracts for POE and POEMG that included a change in contribution to the CalPERS Classic Members, 1% additional for second year, 1% for third year. So this request today is to officially start that process with CalPERS. The contracts allowed us to request it, and the proposed resolution of intention and the ordinance will now allow us to officially initiate the change with PERS. And that is all I have for this report. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, questions? How about speaker cards on this item?
No speaker cards, sir.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and/or a motion.
Move and second.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote. And the title for this ordinance is "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of El Cajon Approving an Amendment to the Contract Between the City of El Cajon and the Board of Administration California Public Employees Retirement Systems."
Thank you very much. All right, there are no commission reports on today's agenda. Item 13 is my activity report. I would like to add something that I went to a meeting today with several other mayors to meet with EPA Administrator Lee Zeldin to talk about the border sewage crisis. And other than that, my report stands as it was. Carrie?
As reported.
Steve?
As reported.
Phil?
One strike. I did not attend the event on April 17th, the CFVC event.
There are no junk council reports, no general information items on today's agenda. We have two introductions of ordinances on today's agenda. Item 18 is for a fee for a non-emergent lift assist services, and staff will tell us all
Good afternoon. Hi, Mayor, members of the city council. As a follow-up to the presentation provided at the April 8th council meeting, I'm here this evening to introduce the ordinance establishing a fee for non-emergent lift assist responses at congregate care facilities. This draft has been shared with local congregate care facilities to provide them with an opportunity to review and respond prior to final adoption. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, thank you. Questions? Okay, thank you. We have any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Okay, back to council for discussion or a motion.
I'd like to bring to light that this fee does not apply to residential care facilities. These are the houses that are in neighborhoods that have up to six people living there, and I'm told because those are licensed by the state that we don't have authority over that.
Like, board and cares and residential living facilities, yeah.
There's one on the street across from me. It had 47 visits last year, and there's nothing we can, this fee does not apply to them. So, with that, I will go ahead and move to introduce the next ordinance in order and to ask a clerk to read this ordinance and direct that we'd have a second reading.
Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote, and the title for this ordinance is, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Alcoa, Enacting Chapter 8.09 of the Alcoa Municipal Code to Implement a Fee for Non-Emergency Lift Assistance Licensed Care Facilities."
Nice, thank you. All right, the second ordinance to be introduced, item 19, is for a fire safety severity zone map, and staff will tell us all about this. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mayor Wells, respected members of city council, city staff. First, I'd like to introduce our newest fire marshal, Ken King, and he's going to be providing a presentation on this item. And with that, Ken King.
Welcome, thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, mayor pro tem, city council member, city staff. Again, my name is Ken King. We'll make this real brief because I know you've had a long day. So, today before you is the adoption. It's basically a state-mandated notification process from CAL FIRE on the new hazard severity zone maps. What they are is they identify three levels, moderate, high, and very high. Excuse me. CAL FIRE spent quite a bit of time developing these using fire modeling based upon fire history. They spell out different requirements for the three different hazard severity zones. This graph kind of gives a visual indication of the various requirements for building construction, site development, and also for defensible space requirements and hazard reduction disclosures. Real briefly, these are the comparisons of what we have adopted today versus the proposed adoptions that we're moving forward with, with this first reading of the ordinance. You can see that the item on the left has considerably more very-high fire severity zones, which the state reduced, and reduced the total amount of very-high fire severity zones for the city. With that, we have additional links on the city website referencing any insurance questions and the process CAL FIRE took for this. That's all I have at this moment. Any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. Is this map going to reduce the burden on citizens in regard to insurance? Does it change that at all?
The insurance process is independent. They go through a risk assessment, and it's not directly tied to these hazard severity zone maps. The insurance process is multifaceted. There's no direct comparison to these maps. Insurance companies run their own risk assessments and have their own criteria, so I can't say, you know, with reasonable assertion that this is going to either be favorable or less favorable for the insurance process.
So, does this map change anything in the way our citizens live or the way we do business?
It does change building standards, so if you're new construction in these areas of high and very high fire, you're going to have to be held to what we commonly refer to as chapter 7(a) or the WUI code, which has some increase in building construction standards. It also has some defensible space requirements, so there may be some additional vegetation management and clearances done in some of these areas in the high and very high. It also includes the hazard disclosure process during point-of-sale for some of these areas. So, there is going to be some impact on residents based upon this, but these are all mandated state laws that we're having to either enforce or include in our processes.
Thank you. Other questions?
Could we get a shorter URL for the public? An alias, like alcoa.gov/firemaps or whatever you decide?
Yeah, it'd be hard to remember, wouldn't it?
So, I would imagine that Santee would have similar fire maps in that there would be some cooperation between the cities if they were going to be building more, because I live in the middle of the map, not in the middle of the map, but up at the top, and it's right near, it's just down the street from Santee. So, the Santee city line or city limits is right there. They have room to grow or to build. We don't have any room up in that area, but they do, and they're in a high zone. Rattlesnake Mountain is in a high zone. I know that I don't have to worry about it too much in my neighborhood because we would have to go through those zones in order to, if it reaches us, we're done. But I just wanted to know, there is cooperation between the cities, or, you know, are we monitoring, like, what the nearest city is doing as far as their building codes? And like, I mean, am I stuttering here?
No, I think the, to give you just a real quick background on the process, this initial evaluation was done by CAL FIRE, Office of the Fire Marshal, and it was done, simply put, without regards to city boundaries. It was taking a look at all factors, terrain, local geography, those types of things. So, the maps that we have today that are providing direction on these state regulations were done with that global view, I think is kind of what you're looking at for, kind of the big picture.
Right.
And then we overlaid the city boundaries on it and took the ministerial actions we needed to, to comply with the state requirements.
I mean, I'm just kind of worried that if Santee were to increase Sky Ranch or they increased Lamplighter, I think it's Lamplighter, the assisted living place right on Graves and Prospect. If they increase that, that increases fire potential, especially up in Sky Ranch, and that's up at the top of the hole, top of the ridge. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, Santee is also considering this and looking out to make sure that they're not building more than what the area can handle.
I can talk with Santee staff to make sure that they're on the same page. One of the, one of the things that is a major part of this is that this is a state approach. The chapter 7(a), the WUI building code, is a state-adopted code. There are minimum standards provided. So, again, we have that assurance that neighboring jurisdictions have the same minimum requirements that we do. Obviously, cities can be more restrictive, but that state building code and state fire safe regulations in these higher areas are statewide so that we have that benefit of knowing that the neighboring jurisdictions are taking in those factors into account.
Okay. I was just curious if you had any idea on that, but thank you.
Okay, more questions? Thank you, sir, for coming. Thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Are there any speaker cards on this item?
No speaker cards, sir.
All right, bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion.
Move to introduce the proposed ordinance in order, also to direct the city clerk to read the ordinance by title only, and also to direct the second reading of the ordinance to be placed on the May 13th, 2025 agenda.
Please vote.
I think we need a second.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Motion carries by unanimous vote, and the title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Alcoa to Designate Fire Hazard Severity Zones."
There are no second readings of our ordinances on today's agenda and no more closed discussions. This brings us to adjournment. The adjourned regular joint meeting of the Alcoa City Council, Alcoa Housing Authority, Successor Agency, to the Alcoa Redevelopment Agency held this 22nd day of April 2025 is adjourned until Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, at 3:00 p.m. Thank you all very much.